Okay, let's go ahead and get started. Tonight's city council meeting of November 19th, 2018. At 6 o'clock, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to just start out by welcoming Cub Scout PAC 582 here tonight. They'll be asking a few questions of the council later on in the agenda. Thanks for coming, you guys. Christina, the roll call?
Yep. Bastian?
Present.
Clark?
Here.
Fish?
Here.
Housman?
Here.
Parsons?
Present.
Wakefield?
Here.
Mayor Lumberg?
Here. Approval of the agenda. Just... Brian Reed cornered me at the beginning of the meeting. We're going to eliminate 10 G. The resolution 2118 to correct the resolution for the... What was it, Brian?
District.
Tiff District. That they want to look at that a little bit more. It was a wrong legal description. They want to review that. Dennis is working on that. So eliminate that from the agenda. Now I'd look for a motion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Approval of the amendments from November 1st, 5th, and 12th. Motion to approve those minutes?
Shall move.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Bills and claims that were presented in your packet. Any questions, comments?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, we'll have public input right now. Our timed session of five minutes each. Anybody would like to address the council tonight? Okay. Public hearing to review alcohol beverage applications.
This is just our annual review to approve our liquor license and wine license for the year 2019.
Chief or and/or all the officers involved. Anybody have any tickets or anything of these places?
No.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the alcohol beverage licenses for 2019. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, guys. Cub Scout PAC, fire away. These guys, not in the middle at the mayor. Fire at the council members. I'm new to this job.
Hello, my name is Devon Coffin. I'm the den leader for the Arrow of Light Cub Scouts for PAC 582. We're working on one of our local government advancements. So the kids, we have sorted down to three questions that they're going to ask. Just kind of random, generic questions that we came up with. So state your name.
Hi, my name is Owen, and I was wondering how you get businesses to move to Brandon.
I'll start it. We have a... I wasn't supposed to talk. You guys are supposed to do all that. We have a committee that is called the Development Committee. Development Foundation. They work very hard on attracting businesses to come into Brandon. We have industrial parks out north of Brandon that we have plotted and built spec things on and try to entice businesses to come. And Dennis Olson, who's employed by the city of Brandon, is probably the lead on that position. He's always out there trying to hawk business and bring them in. And then we utilize other people, Minnehaw County Makita people, Minnehaw... I don't know what the acronym stands for, but people in Sioux Falls, Minnehaw County, they help us out to draw businesses here. Probably the largest one that we've drawn in the recent past has Ben Marmon. They're the ones that make that wind towers. You see all those when you drive by in the interstate, they have the orange covers on them. They employ about 300 people. So that was probably one of the biggest ones we've had here in a long time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name is Isaiah Gunnick, and is there a plan to get more sidewalks in town?
I took the easy one, you guys.
That's why you can pay the big bucks.
They came up with these on their own.
This is good. So recently, we had another young gentleman that came to us and asked to get some help with some of the crosswalks by the schools. And we, as council, are always looking for great ideas from our community. And if you have a specific area that you'd like to see something improved, you just have to let us know. One of the cool things that we have is we have an engineer that helps us all the time. Her name's Tammy. She's hiding over there on the table. And she has a map system where she can see the entire town. And if you guys ever had an area that you wanted more sidewalks in certain spots, we could probably get you hooked up with her, and you could put some lines on a map for us, and we can figure out where maybe some good spots would be. Is that cool?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Very good question.
Hello, my name is Lincoln. Is there an age requirement for becoming the mayor or a council member?
Not that I'm aware of. Is there 18?
18.
18.
Yeah, you have to be at least 18 years old. I took these on.
You have to be old enough to vote.
Yep.
And a registered voter. And if you're in council, you have to live in the ward. We talked about that earlier, that you want to be on the council for. So you want to make sure you get those things figured out. And then what you do is you go around to your neighbors that are in that same ward, and you get 50 signatures, a few extras just in case, and then you're ready to go. So when you turn 18, it'd be awesome to have some young folks on council.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate you for coming. When you guys stepped up here before and you were asking what I was doing at the beginning of the meeting, I said I was nervous about what you were going to ask. Now you know why. Guess I had some great questions. Thank you. Okay, moving on, the golf course committee report. Anything additional there? We approved the rates last time?
Approved the rates last time. They had their golf get together last... Two weeks ago. Went well. Things are obviously slowing down. Hopefully, when it gets up to 50 on Wednesday, it'll have some more golfers, but don't hold your breath.
There you go. Good. Police committee report. Police office is surplusing some police radios.
We've been going through the process of upgrading our portable radios and our mobile radios. The three on the list are portable radios. They are still valid for a few more years. Fire department is in need of some additional ones, and so we're proposing that we surplus these three out and then turn them over to the fire department for their request.
Very good. Do we need a motion on the surplus property, Brian? Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Yeah, I would recommend declaring them surplus, putting a value of under $500, and then just donate them to the Brandon volunteer fire department all in one motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve. I'll make a motion that goes under $500 and that they get donated to Brandon Fire Department.
Motion is second to surplus the police radios and pass them on to the fire department. All those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. That's all. Thank you. Fire department report. Brian, anything there?
Nope, just their year-end financial report.
That's right. That's right.
Yep. And then they'll be included in our 2018 audit as well. Though our auditors will take a look at their year-end financials when they come up and do our audit.
Perfect. Thank you. New agreement for animal control in Brandon? Updating the present agreement, I assume?
Correct. It's exactly the same with the Sioux Falls Area Humane Society for animal control. The only thing that might change would be the mileage charged, because that's tied to the federal rate.
Do we need a motion?
Yep.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor of approving the new animal control agreement with the Humane Society? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Side note, I had a conversation with my little puffball dog this morning. Just me and her sitting at the kitchen table, having coffee, and I said... The story with the coyote was out there. I said, "Don't go outside now. Look out for these animals." It's a pretty intellectual conversation with me and my dog. Well, sometimes she does answer back. That's concerning to me. Parks and Recreation. You had a work report in your packet. Any questions on that? And then we also had a water truck bid for, I think it was $22,500, if memory serves me correctly.
Yes. Yep, that's going to replace the... We have that '89 green Chevy three-quarter ton. We need something better that can go up and down the sidewalks on Holly Boulevard, but also has the mobility and speed, I guess, to, you know, get out to the West Side Welcome sign, places like that. So this should hopefully do that. And then with the scissor lift attachment, or lack of a better word, it'll be useful for many other things, we think, so.
Very good. Any questions from the council?
I would make a motion to approve.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried to purchase new water truck. Thank you. Okay, the administration committee reports. The first reading of the fireworks ordinance, number 572.
I laid out the paper copy with that change to the $250 fine per violation that the council discussed earlier.
I did hand out a letter to the council that I had received in an email format. I don't think the rest of you got it, from a neighborhood in my ward, asking that we not go forward with this particular proposal. They want the opportunity to shoot off more than what we're proposing. And I don't know, how many signatures are on there, Tim? I didn't count. 16 signatures? They weren't able to be here tonight, so.
Any other comments from the council on the fireworks ordinance?
I do have one suggestion to add to the ordinance. A citizen... I'll pass it around. Just sorry, we have the same words. A citizen did quite a bit of research on this topic and suggested that we add to the ordinance the phrase "for the preservation of the public peace, mental health, and safety of the community." Wouldn't change the ordinance. I did visit with Lisa, and she thought it was nominal enough that it wouldn't prohibit us from having a first reading. Is that correct? Okay. So unless there's any opposition, I would recommend that we add this to that first reading or to the ordinance.
Anyone?
I'm good with the added phrasing.
Dana, would it just go... Would it just go right under 711? You'd put it right there for the preservation, et cetera, comma, unless authorized by permit? Is that where you're proposing it?
Unless you just lead the ordinance right underneath 711. So it's kind of like the intent of the ordinance? I guess I would follow your expertise on placement.
Okay.
I'm good with the ordinance as it stands, with the addition of "for the preservation of the public peace, mental health, and safety of the community."
Barb, what are your thoughts?
As I stated at a previous council meeting, I think we're swinging the pendulum too far from one end to the other. I would like to go to the middle, but that is not the rest of the council's opinion. So I will not be voting for this motion, but if it does go into effect, I will support it as part of the council.
Others? Any change since last time from other council members? Nope. Do we approve a first reading?
If you need a motion with the first reading to include the language that Dana suggested.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance with the revision that Dennis proposed to us.
Motion is second for the first reading with the slight change that was handed out tonight for the fireworks ordinance, number 572. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Call the roll. Christina?
Yep.
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Fish? Housman?
Nay.
Parsons?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Four to two.
Motion passes four to. Thank you. Information was included in your packet on a forensic audit. Any comments, questions, concerns on that topic?
When was the last time that we did a forensic audit? Have we ever... Never?
I did a little research on this, just trying to get better acquainted with what a forensic audit actually is meant to do. And everything that I come up with relates back to it being used really as evidence in court for suspected embezzlement. I even looked up, like, reasons why you might need a forensic audit, and I'm just not finding a reason that would justify the dollars. We're talking $30,000, and then staff time on top of that with the two highest paid people we have. I mean, we're talking like $35,000 for this thing. I just can't fathom us moving forward with this without some strong underlying reason, which I don't think has been presented.
Yes. And for everybody's purposes, the forensic audit does not replace the regular certified audit that the county or the city has to go through every year. So there would be another $25,000 on top of the proposed 25, $30,000 forensic audit.
I agree with what Dana said, and in light of it not being able to replace the current audit, I wouldn't be in favor of it. I would offer to the council, though I've been doing some other checking on what, you know, Barb and I, as being on the finance committee, what we do now with Christina on a monthly basis, go through and check accounts and reconciliation. I've done some more checking, and I would like Barb and I to sit down with Christina and go over some more, what I'd call be separation of duties. I think that'd be a good thing to do and see if that can be implemented.
Brian, why are we even considering a forensic audit?
Well, there's rumbling and concern out in the community regarding funds, primarily in the utilities departments. And we, as staff, thought that you would like to take a look at the cost of the forensic audit, what services it would provide us, in an attempt to quiet some of those concerns regarding misappropriation of funds and/or fraud.
Was there one person in particular that made this comment, or was it a series of maybe... Is it social media, or where was this located?
Social media, primarily.
Well, with that being said, and you know my feelings on social media and the stuff, the stuff that gets put on social media, I don't approve this forensic audit. We have never had any trouble with our audit. We have never had any issues with our money. I believe there's particularly maybe one person that had a lot to do with this, and that person should come forward if they so choose. But I personally don't think, from a city standpoint, that we need to go spend 20,000 to 30,000 to $35,000 on a forensic audit when we've never had any issues whatsoever. Again, we're going to state again, if you have questions about what we do as a city, you call the city. You come to one of us, but please don't go put it out on social media. It's not going to get a lot of attention, but it will get attention if you call City Hall or if you contact one of us.
I'm comfortable with the recommendations of Dana and the other council members that have spoken already, that I would agree that we do not need the forensic audit. But I would also concur with Chuck that the additional recommendations that he had would be something that I'd be in favor of as well.
Tim, you have... I've seen some posts about the forensic audit. Is this going to address your concerns? Is there something, other questions that you have specifically about this, or was it just a question?
So when it comes to this topic, I guess I would have, you know, liked to have seen more of a scope of work. What are we doing when we talk audits? You know, when you use the word forensic audit, everyone thinks that it's this big negative thing, which is really what's going on today here as we talk about it. But when we're looking at things like, you know, a lot of feedback that I've received is, is we raised our rates on the sewer, and we're out of money, and we're raising the rates again. Where did that money go? You know, so that's a transparency type thing, right? So talking about it. And, you know, would it be... Would it make sense to de-scope some of this, so it's not an entire forensic audit, but maybe it's just detailed into one of the funds? And what would that cost? So I think that there, you know, has been a call from several residents to look at something like this, where it's a little more detailed and more open. But I don't know that it truly needs necessarily a $35,000 research either. So, you know, is there something that we could be doing differently when it comes to our annual audit? We've used the same annual audit firm for many years. And this year, just now, we get a recommendation from Aid Bailey for a forensic audit. Would it make sense for us to look at having them or others, quote, "doing our annual audit"? I think that might also be a good opportunity for us to see a little different view. When you've had the same eyes look at something for a decade or however long it's been, you may have missed something in the way. So just that's, I guess, what the feedback was that I had received.
Well, I think some of that information could come out of the annual audit, and maybe we just need to do a better job of explaining the annual audit. I think all of those questions could be answered through that. You know, sometimes it's easy to ask the questions without not being willing to do the work. So I'm sure the staff would be willing to answer any questions. I'm not an auditor by any means, but I'm wondering if perhaps what Chuck has proposed, and if we do a better job of explaining the annual audit, that that might satisfy those issues.
I would add, Tim, if you're aware of the specific questions that the citizens have approached, you might get them to Barb and I, and we'll address them as being on the finance committee, but nobody's approached us.
Additional comments?
On a side note, I was really impressed with the presentation that Aid Bailey did. I think the information that they provided was good. I'd like to talk to them further if we're potentially interested in, you know, looking at different firms to do our annual. Their information seemed very powerful. Again, I would think, if you want, you kick that back to Barb and I on the finance committee, and we'll do some due diligence as to if that's a possibility.
Okay, as we're not going to approve anything, I guess we don't have to have a motion, or it's the consensus of the council, though, to kick these items back to the committee, Chuck and Barb, look at possibility of another firm auditing, or some of the questions that have been raised, for them to address those with staff. Is that fair, summary? That's where we're going with it. Item C, social media policy, 4851.
You've got a draft social media policy to govern how we use social media in the various forums, Facebook, Twitter, our website, et cetera. Just a draft at the moment. We'd had some discussions regarding the last sentence in the policy statement, the first paragraph under policy. City social media sites may be modified or removed by the city at any time without notice as described in this document. We could certainly add some language in there. You know, modified, they're going to be modified at any time by the staff, by new additions or posts. Be removed by the city if you wanted to add some oversight by the council on that. That would... We could certainly work that in there.
That was my comment, under the second section of policy, just so that we have a checks and balances, because it says we can shut it down at any time. So I would just like to see, like, the mayor or somebody sign off on that, if that becomes the main source of our communication. And then my other area that I wanted some clarity around was the page three part with the city identifier, just so we didn't get so restrictive with our language that we were just unable to reference anything. And we talked about, like, this summer, how we... How a lot of the local social media sites had the water smarter magnets on them and portrayed what the lawn watering schedule was. Is that a city identifier, that type of thing? So I guess we might be getting a little too restrictive there.
Can I have a question regarding personal social media use? Does that also include city council and mayor?
Yeah, that's... Everybody is subject to the policy. There was a question earlier about the school and how they monitor that. I did get a chance to check that out. The high school is the only Facebook site that we have, the high school monitors that. And basically, what happens if there's a post comes in, it alerts Dr. Telkot that a post comes in, so he goes and looks at it. And we just, quite honestly, speaking to him, we just have had no comments. I mean, we post... We post things, and sometimes other people post some things, but I said, "Well, what do you do when the public complains about the coach or whatever?" And we just haven't had that. Now I did it. So...
I did review an updated personnel policy not too long ago that the HR consulting firm has done. We're holding off on that until after we get some of the administrative policies done, so we can coordinate appointed versus elected and things of that nature, put in the personnel policy updates. So in terms of just integrating this, this governs council, elected officials, consultants, and employees. And so it may be good to put everything together as one when we're developing all these and put it out in a collective packet in terms of some of the policies, just to do a full rollout, potentially. I think those policies, the personnel policies will be ready to go as soon as we get through tonight, the changes, the ordinances, and we can integrate them, probably.
Do we have a timeframe on the implementation of this, in terms of have we set a date, or... So can we do that, so we don't keep pushing this back and back? I mean, I think we lose ground every time that we let another social media outlet tell the story about what is not happening with the city. And for one, I believe that we need to become more proactive at educating our citizens. And so for me, I want to see this done sooner than later. So I don't know, is this something that we can discuss as a council, to have this implemented in the next 30 days? Or, you know, what do you guys think in terms of moving forward with this, so we can get this off our table and start to deal with the next serious issue that this council needs to address for the city?
Kick it back, Brian. I don't know the protocol for a policy like this. Is it going to go through so many board meetings, or...
Nope, just a motion to approve. You could, if you wanted to, do it by resolution and attach the social media policy, or whatever policy it is, as an appendix to the resolution. It's a little more formal.
It's a little more formal.
I agree with Brett. I think that we need to get this going. It's been months in the works and we've had communication specialists tell us that we need to do this. So I think we just need to do it.
I do, too. And I think, as Brett said, we need to take control of it, not let others control it on their own personal pages. So it's time to make it go.
So is it reasonable to expect we could act on this the next council meeting? That'd be my preference.
I just asked what they do for the finance. And that was by resolution, so it may be that you want to do this one by resolution and be consistent with some of these that are more overriding for the city. And we could do that for the next meeting.
Direction to bring it back as a resolution next time? And it'll be up for approval at the next board meeting?
And we'll take a look at, with the removal, with the mayor's permission, and then try to find some language for the logos, et cetera.
Dana, if you say, sorry, Paul, if you say with the mayor's permission, mayor's out of town, does it go to the council president?
Okay, very good. Item 10D is in dog, wage and benefits study.
Okay, my turn. I've got several topics under here. I'm not going to go completely in order just because a couple of them are related to each other. We can address the bottom two first. These are just really quick updates, revised pay scale and salary adjustments. Pass these out. So our committee met a week ago roughly, and we've given some direction to staff to work on a revised pay scale. If everybody remembers, the one that we previously had was, was pretty crazy. It looked like this, two-sided and very cumbersome, very complicated, very hard to understand. So we're looking at minimalizing that, making it much more simplistic, getting it down to more like 20 to 30 lanes with 15 steps. We would have it max out at 15 years. We'd be looking to have the basis originate more from the market versus, say, at a minimum wage. However, we will have to account for some that are paid less than minimum wage, such as the staff at the golf course that does, that does waiting. We did agree to stick with what we do now with the graduated percentage that's higher at the beginning and then it tapers off at the end. And we agreed that individuals should move to their next step level, which is raise for common terms, following an annual performance review, which we're going to switch over to be anniversary dates rather than just at the end of the year. So we did table what's going to happen with people, when people reach the top of their pay scale. When an individual reaches the top of the scale that's established for their position, we didn't really come to a conclusion on that yet. We wanted to see the scale, but we did kind of lean towards a pay freeze with possibility of COLA. We didn't seem to have a lot of interest around longevity bonuses, especially since that pay scale is going to be designed to get people to those next levels quicker with less steps. It means for the employee that they're going to see larger raises quicker. An area that we were not unanimous on was the COLA. With evaluations being moved to anniversary dates and having that shorter step scale, it means, again, that the employees are going to see larger raises quicker that will compound. So the discussion that we had was whether or not they also get a second raise each year in addition to that step raise by way of COLA. So right now, the COLA is at 2.9%. And something to consider, our proposed budget includes payroll of just shy of $3 million for 2019, so that equates to $87,000. So that was one thing I thought we could just have a quick discussion and get council thoughts at the infastri stage where they're developing the pay scale. Do you guys have opinions on the COLA?
All right, Cub Scouts, this is probably one of the more difficult things. So that's why you're seeing a lot of hesitation, okay? Catching it? All right, good enough, moving on. So when it comes to pay and pay increases, we have to be really prudent with how we spend the taxpayer dollars. And cost of living increases can be important, but also is pay for performance. And that's one thing that when you get into the private sector, you'll notice a lot of is, is if you do a good job, you move up steps. And in the federal world, that's how it is. I, every year, if I've done my job, I move up a step. And we have a very specific formula in place. Now, when you look at how much we have in overall expense and you put that into a dollar value of $87,000 that we would expect to incur just in cost of living increases, that doesn't include anything for the salary increases based on performance. And I know very specifically from the opportunities I've had to meet with the staff, whether it's the law enforcement, who we're fortunate enough to have a lot here, or the public works or any of them, we have a lot of staff that really exceed my expectations. And in that case, that's typically would be more towards a performance-based increase and not a cost of living. So I would rather see it not always be COLA.
I would rather see it based on performance.
I was one that would rather see it based on COLA because then they're guaranteed a raise.
I also was one that thought it would be based on COLA.
Guess we're coming down on sides, huh? I'd have to go with performance-based, just because I come from the business world and that's the way it is.
Because I've worked in federal, state, and now city, that is one of the reasons why I am pro-COLA, because of the fact that performance-based, yeah, I suppose, but COLA just seems to be right for our employees. And, you know, maybe take that 20 to 30,000 we're going to spend on forensic and do it for them.
Remind me again, too, with regards to the COLA versus the performance evaluation, do we have two separate steps, two separate tables then? One that would have the market value of that position and then the steps associated with whatever performance, as well as the COLA? Or is it, it's really one with the addition of the performance evaluation on top of COLA? Just for my clarification on that.
Yeah, it's a combination of the two. The cost of living adjustment, we base upon the Consumer Price Index, all workers nationwide, and that computes buying power from one year to the next. So a dollar today isn't going to buy a dollar's worth next year. That's to keep your employees level. And then we talked about moving through the steps, the 15 steps, with some type of performance review. So it's a combination of, at least that was my understanding, it would be a combination of the two.
We did also talk about going back and doing updates on that market performance to make sure that we were keeping up with the times. And I was also for the performance eval. So mayor, we may need a tiebreaker.
Well, you don't need any decisions tonight until we, until we develop the scale.
No, that's what the Personnel Committee is for, is to make recommendations as to how they want to see that and what they want presented to the council. So we were going to move forward with a presentation of a salary scale based upon the 15 steps and then however many appropriate grades or lane changes, and then base that somewhat on market currently, and then develop a policy that we would go back every two, three, four, five years, whatever, and do a wage study for market versus what our scale is.
But the salary schedule that you develop with the 15 steps, that's just steps. There's no, nothing else in that. There's just one through 15 steps. $500 between each step or whatever it is. And so as that person goes from two to three years, if they've done a satisfactory job, go from step three to step four, they'll get in it, just hypothetically, get an additional $500. And then if the council so chooses, I suspect, to include a COLA on top of that, that's how you pass that?
Correct.
Okay. Just so I was getting straight. So it's, you're currently at a combination of those two?
Apparently, we do a CPIU or the COLA January 1 for all full-time employees. So January 1, they're getting the COLA, and then on their anniversary date, they go up a step. That's currently the way it is.
That, that's through approval, council approval, though, or is it automatic?
Nope, January 1, the council approves all wages and salaries for employees, full-time employees for the year. That's averaged out over the year due to anniversary changes. We would make that switch to, we would, January 1, everybody's salaries would be approved. And then as their anniversary arrives, if there'd be any step movement, there'd be changes at that point in time.
Correct. Okay.
So when we had the budget, when we were tight with the budget, did we not do, did we do a CPI then?
We tied wages to the CPI three years ago, four years ago?
Starting in 2014.
2014. We started tying them to the CPIU.
Because, I mean, I think if, just like any other business, if we have a rough year, for whatever reason, we have a recession or whatever, I think everybody has to, has to take a hit. And so I don't want to be locked into an automatic COLA.
Everything is subject to approval by the council at January 1.
So then with that, oh, sorry, mayor. With that, with the cost of living increase, basically we would say whatever it is, 2.9%. And then it would literally be the table, every single step and line would get that 3%-ish increase, correct, on the table? Is that how you?
Typically how it works.
Any union in the city?
Nope.
Okay, so then tied to that is the salary adjustments. I was told that we weren't able to do anything with, with a particular salary or category of salaries until we get this figured out, which I think we need to do as soon as possible. I've been pretty vocal that I think there's a couple of areas that I feel after the wage and benefits study need to be corrected. Police and Raleigh were the two that I've been pretty vocal on. So I guess I would like for us to set some expectations with when we can bring this back and put it in motion. So I don't, do we need to set up another Personnel Committee meeting? Or how long is the pay scale going to take?
And see when we can have one available, and then we'll meet when it's, when it's ready for presentation to the committee.
Leave it completely open-ended? Can we try to have this resolved by like?
I would like to have it done by the middle of December.
So I guess, you know, having gone through some of that information and reviewed it, you know, I've seen some discrepancies both on the high side and the low side. Definitely on the low side, those are going to be key focus areas when I look at it. There's some people that have been putting in a lot of effort and we haven't been doing what's right and just on our side from the city, so there's some things we need to do to adjust those. So, you know, I think it's important that we focus on that. My expectation is, is that's something that we could approve so it could go into effect potentially in January when we do all the typical pay stuff. So if we can have that prepared and ready to review and make some motions on it in at least the middle of December meeting, that'd be great.
So it was the goal of the Personnel Committee to condense that matrix of steps and stuff? That was the big goal of, of the committee? To condense that from the 90 lines and 21 steps?
Yeah, well, it's kind of an underlying goal to accomplish our goals with the salaries. We had, we have to get that all in alignment before we can make any salary revisions, is what I understand.
I guess I would ask the council that, I think there are two different things, the salary schedule, the step stuff, and the COLA are two different things that have been there in the past, and it's always up to the council discretion whether those get, if there's no money there, the council can just say, "No step increases this year." I mean, it's tough on the employees, but that's, if there's no money, there's no money. Or there's no COLA that year or whatever. I mean, generally, it doesn't happen, but everything's approved by you guys. So I would suspect that what we'd want to do is continue forward with a revised step and lane schedule, or step and salary schedule, with the steps of 15. And all employees fall under that?
Correct. Well, part-timers. We've had some discussions about part-timers, whether or not they should be on there or not, but all full-timers certainly will.
That becomes difficult trying to get all those. It's not an easy undertaking. But I would, I'm sensing that's the direction we want to go with the step and salary schedule and then the COLA on top of it at the council discretion. With a deadline date of middle of December, second meeting in December? Questions, comments?
Okay, so a couple more items to tackle here. We had health insurance deductible buybacks and health premium contributions. So we had our first committee meeting back in early August, and we've been working towards this. And back in October, 11th briefing and 15th council, we gave direction to get another quote from a different set of fresh eyes. And unfortunately, the time has just passed to be able to do that. But I don't think that we should stop the momentum on this because we have found out that, that a lot is needed to move forward. I think that we've maybe been a little bit gun-shy of looking at anything because of the word grandfather clause has been brought up. And a lot of times, there's, there's a perception that you don't want to give up grandfather clause or that it's good, but it's not always good, not, not in the insurance world. So the plan that we're on right now is extremely limiting to what we can do for our, our employees, for what we can do for the plan, for what we can do for the deductibles, for what we can do for deductible buybacks, what options we have. Everything is extremely limited. So I'll give you a bunch of my notes and I'll just go through a couple of the highlights just really to more point out that we need to keep the momentum going and, and keep working on this in the next couple, three months. We currently pay over half a million dollars in health insurance. And if you look at the breakdowns that I've done, majority of that is coming from, from family plans. As we heard during our work session from our HL, HR gal, having the 100% paid health premiums and deductible buybacks are just unheard of. So we just are at a point where we need to get some things current. The national averages for contributions are 82% on single and 70 on family. And I believe the school's 100% single and 70 family. And in our HR gal's research with municipalities, she found out the averages are 69 on single and 61 on family. These are at the bottom of page one. Page two is really just showing a few different options, just focusing on, on family plans, on what kind of, of money becomes available to the city budget based off of 10%, 15%, 20%. Again, just kind of a, a looky-loo to see how large some of these are. And the third page is some examples of what this impact would look like to the employees. And the savings out there is, I mean, it's, it's, it's very substantial. That national average, the 82 on single and 70 on family and getting rid of deductible buybacks would save the city $170,000 a year. And that does not count for one other factor, which would be having spouses potentially get off of the city plan and go on to the plan that they have where they work. Because right now, that was, that was definitely something that was uncovered as, with our plan being so lucrative and being free and deductible, going back to the, the employee, who wouldn't want to be on it? So we're having spouses that have plans available to them where they work, but they're taking the city's, and that's raising our costs. So there's a lot of money out there, and I don't think anybody from the committee or council wishes to do anything drastic. But I think that we're in a predicament where we're tasked with a difficult job of finding a really good, solid benefit package for our employees while being prudent with tax dollars. Definitely not an easy, easy task, but I think we need to do it and start with some of those unheard of items. And I just want to point out that, that's also going to give us the opportunity to align some salaries and find other areas within our plan where we can be more comprehensive. Because, just because we have a super inexpensive for the employee health plan, doesn't mean that we actually have a great benefits package. There's several things that we should be looking at. We don't have long-term disability. We don't have long-term disability. We don't have short-term disability. We don't have long-term care. We don't have group life. So it's kind of all in the eye of the beholder if it's a great benefits package. And, and some of these examples are, are very small. I mean, how's the employee paying like twenty-six dollars? So I think sometimes things get a little bit blown out of proportion. And the last page is what we can do now, which is very, very restrictive because of the window closing on us and our plan being so restrictive in the grandfather status. Really all we can do is potentially impose a five percent employee contribution premium, which is highlighted. So those would be the costs if we wanted to implement that. Uh not a huge savings, twenty-six thousand dollars to the city. But that would free up, um, money for the payroll shortage that we have or, or part of it.
Comments?
I just want to make sure that you do know that probably half of our staff already paid the five percent. They're not doing well.
I would ask, did the committee, who is the committee?
I wasn't at the meeting where the health insurance.
Did they look into the history? I, I just of how these benefits became, uh, uh, what they are today? I just.
Unfortunately, we weren't able to look at any other plan because time just went by.
No, I mean, the negotiation of the, of the whole process. The reason I ask that, I've been involved with negotiations for thirty years and each and every line item that's in the agreement with the teachers' union has a, has a story behind it. And I can point to each line item in that negotiated agreement that has a story. Did the committee look at how we got to where we're at today with a hundred percent single and then, and then a hundred percent family after three years?
I honestly don't think it's really been looked at because I think that we were, uh, in, kind of led to believe that that grandfather policy wasn't anything that we really wanted to rock the boat on. That's, that's the senses I've received from everybody that, that I've asked about it. Now, as far as looking into the policy, unfortunately, anybody being able to do that is, is completely handcuffed because nobody has access to the policy other than our current agent. Wellmark, for example, won't let other people come in and give a second opinion or dissect it or give recommendations. So the, the gal that I met with just on Thursday is doing this all kind of blindly off of, of data that we've been able to put together for her finally. But that's why I wanted to show, uh, what's out there and what needs to be looked at. I would like to see us bring in a couple, three qualified benefits specialists that have, uh, a lot of arsenal behind them, a lot of expertise. Uh, this agent, for example, just had numerous, uh, things she could provide us with, compliance, things in-house and calculators and uh you name it. I just, I think we're long overdue for a second pair of eyes on this.
I think, um, part of it, mayor, is that, um, the argument was that our staff was underpaid and so we needed to beef up our benefits if that, I, I could be all wet, but that was my understanding. And so that's where the hundred percent of family came from. And that's why we wanted to do the wage and, and benefits study to see if that was really the case.
That's kind of my point, that we can't undo what was put into place by our forefathers, not our forefathers, but our previous councils. You always have to look at those things that were put into place by previous councils or, and/or administrations.
And that's why we did the benefits or the wage study so that we would have some basis for making changes if we wanted to make those changes.
Right, right.
Um, personally for me, since I am on the personnel committee, but I did not sit in on the meetings with Dana and the HR gal and the new insurance person. I, I do think we need to look at different, and a different agent and maybe just get a broader scope, but I don't think we need to do anything now. I just think first of all, we need to get into place the wage and benefits study and then just break it down from there. You know, what are the wages? What are we paying? What's the, you know, what's, are we okay? Like Barb said, yeah, we were, we were like our police officers, you know, they were almost underpaid. But then the benefits were so good and we have really low turnover. And I think our employees like working for the city. I mean, don't you? I mean, I think if we have good employees and they're not going to leave, I have a real problem rocking the boat with them. Because if we start changing things up, we're going to start rocking the boat a lot. So let's start with just the wage and benefits study, kind of go from there and then start looking into the health insurance, you know, down the road. We did this, I don't know, three, four, or five years ago or some, I don't remember. But we didn't want to rock the boat then and I'm kind of in that same predicament now. Yes, I think we should look at the wage and benefits study and take one thing at a time. We don't have to change everything all at once.
Reason I'm saying now is because we started this in August and we got nothing done. So that's why I'm saying now, for hopes that we get.
And we still don't do anything now.
Um, but I, we do. I mean, our renewal will be here in like, I don't know, March or April. So that's why I'm saying we need to keep going forward. We need to keep momentum. We, we're not even looking at what else is out there when we say we don't want to rock the boat.
I guess I get, you know, frustrated when, when I see that we don't have options, uh, for our, our staff. Um, so I know, uh, I've had the opportunity to hear, uh, what some people think about this, uh, from the staff side. And most people don't realize it, but the retirement plan for our police officers is based off the pay with, that we give them, not the complete compensation. So when it comes time to retire, they'd actually be better off had we paid them more and asked them to chip in a little bit for insurance. And that's the type of thing that I want to make sure that we think of a, as a whole, is there's more to it than just that. Now, being a, a federal employee, I have the opportunity to choose from way too many choices. I have, I can't even count. It's ridiculous. I don't even look. I asked my wife to figure it out and magically we have health insurance. But we don't do that here in the city. We don't have any choices at all. We don't give the opportunity to look at things like Aflac, uh, which we have lots of young families. And, um, I've had Aflac in the past. It's great. My kid broke his finger and we got covered by Aflac, but we don't sponsor that as a city. Uh, so really are we giving the best, uh, the best benefits package and, and when I review what we're looking at, you know, hey, we're doing some neat things, but we're not anywhere near the industry standard, whether you look at the city, uh, municipals or, or the private sector or the federal sector, we're just, it's not where it needs to be. Uh, and furthermore, the fact that we started this process in August and we literally couldn't get the information to someone else to shop, it bugs the heck out of me. It, it really does because those delays are things that cost us time and money as a city. Those are types of things that we could have potentially looked at, bringing in a different coverage that could have been cost savings and could have been the same coverage or maybe even better. And it would, would have saved the, the city money. So when that type of thing happens, it makes it a lot easier for us at this table to say, cost of living increase? Oh, two point nine percent? Well, let's maybe make it three point two. But when we don't have the opportunity to shop that, it, it really bothers me because there was some holdups and, and I know Dana has put a ton of effort into this and done a ton of research and, you know, it's not about trying to take things away from people. It's give them options because, you know, again, it might cost you a little bit to chip in, but if you're getting paid equally, I mean, that's the whole point of it. When I look at the benefits and wages study that we have, we've got some discrepancies there, folks. And yeah, it's going to be a mess and we're going to have a lot of staff asking us, are we sure it's right? They're going to want to know exactly what their paychecks are going to look like. And those are all things that we're going to have to work through. But if we don't take and shop around for insurance, I mean, I can tell you that in the last year, I've shopped around on insurance on my personal stuff. And literally I was overpaying by a thousand dollars a year on my house, my cars and all that. It's ridiculous. Because I didn't shop around. And we're not shopping around. I don't know how long we've been with this same carrier, but there's other things out there and let's, let's work on it. Um, you know, and, and I want to make the package helpful to our staff. I mean, let's ask them what they're looking for. You know, I said the word Aflac and there was more than one head that shook in this room. And they're from staff, you know, so why aren't we doing those types of things? We do?
That's why the heads were shaking.
That's why the heads were shaking.
Because I asked and one of the staff said that we didn't. So, but those types of things, you know, we need to, we need to make sure that it's a complete package, you know, and go from there. So, um, with that, I, I'd really like to shop around. I think we have to be prudent with taxpayers' money and try and save some.
So, Joe, just to clarify, so you, you were in favor of looking at different options for the carrier?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So, so along with that, and I'm not knowledgeable in this and I appreciate what the committee's doing, are there timeframes if we're going to look at other carriers that we have to get certain things done by? Not done by switching, but just asking our due diligence.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we're, we're actually eligible to look at large, large group employer plans. We're grandfathered into an old small group plan and the large one comes with a lot of different options. Uh, but to do that, you have to start at ground zero and you have to collect a lot of questionnaires from employees and, and get claims reports and, and it's a process.
So, so back to Joe's question though, and I think I agree with it. If we want to look at different carriers, we have to be willing to go through a certain amount of due diligence. Not that we're going to make a change necessarily, but we have to do all of our homework, which I don't think anybody disagrees with. But, but that's what, is that not what Dana's trying to do?
Well, you got to put a package together.
Yeah.
Of what the whole thing is going to look like. That this is what you want from each individual carrier. You just can't.
Right.
Say, I want insurance. Well.
Right, but we have to allow the committee to go through that.
You can imagine what you're going to get there.
Through that process.
Administration has to put together a package that, uh, delineates what we want in our insurance coverage and then put it out for everybody to take a look at.
Can it?
If that's what you desire to do, I think.
And it could take a year. It could take, you know, I know Dana wants it to be done now, but it, I, we need to look at the wage and benefits study first. That's number one. And then, once we realize what that is, then we go looking for the insurance. I realize her, you know, she wants to get it done. She wants it changed by July. I don't think it's going to happen that fast. I, I won't see the wage and benefits study first and then start checking around with different carriers just to see what they have to offer and then go from there. I don't think it has to be done like ASAP. But I do, I am in support of looking at different carriers, what they have to offer, you know, two to three. Why don't we check out two to three? I think, you know, most other places probably do that.
There's a, there's a limit as to how many carriers are actually offering health insurance. I think we can do it concurrently. I'm not sure why we can't look at the wage and benefits in addition to the insurance at the same time.
The wage and benefits was actually done in August. That's what we, that's what started this whole process where we saw people were underpaid, others were overpaid. So we've, we've done the wage and benefits. Now we just need to correct the pay scale and look at benefits.
So we're still not done with the wage and benefits study yet because we have to correct the pay scale. So until that is, until that is done, then we have to keep looking, but I don't think we need to change everything all at once.
I'm not proposing that we change all at once, but I think to Barb's point, we can keep moving both along.
But that's what, again, that's what I've said. We can move both along. We can start looking and looking at things. And I'm not putting a stop to anything, but we can look at things, but we have to get the pay scale and the wage and benefits study done first. And then, you know, keep looking at the different insurance.
As part of the personnel committee, I would agree with Chuck, Barb and Dan. I think we need to get going on this. It's been way too long. I think the personnel committee has made great strides in the last week with regards to our meeting the other day and the questions that we answered so that Brian and staff can move forward with the pay scale. I think we have challenges ahead. This city needs things. And we may have to look at things and how we're going to raise that money to support things. So when we talk about just simple things like, um, which aren't very simple, especially for us to get up here and try to discuss this, uh, things like buybacks, that's something real that we're going to have to look at. I also think that, uh, that percentage given, whether it's a hundred percent to family or eighty percent to whatever that number is, that's something we have to look at. And the reason for that is, is it's going to allow us to, uh, you know, catch up salaries that are below market value. We have a few folks in this room possibly that aren't making what they need to make. And so unfortunately, that money has to come from somewhere. Also, that money will help us, uh, any future money savings will help us, uh, move to maybe a possibly more comprehensive plan, which is going to be benefit to every family. And then the last thing is, is it can offset, possibly offset some future healthcare costs. So for me personally, staff's already been given, we've answered those questions. They're moving forward with the pay scale and some of the things that we're trying to do for the wage and benefits. I think we need to continue to move forward with the insurance. We need to look at what the possibility of that might be for saving the city. And, and, you know, I, I would say we set a timeframe on that so that we can move forward, so it doesn't keep getting tabled, keep, keep getting forgotten. And why we continue to work on things like you're already working on. So for me, as part of that personnel committee, um, I think we just keep moving forward and we place timeframes on these things so we can get them done.
So in the end, it has to do with one big thing and that's the paycheck. And if we delay and don't time this right, that's where it becomes an issue. So if we're going to start raising people's pay and we're not going to ask for any payment for the insurance, it's not going to balance out. It's going to be in the police favor, which great. But in six months from now, when we finally get to the time that it's okay, then they're going to be taking a pay cut at that time. When we've given them a pay raise because we've said wages aren't good enough. And then six months from now, we get to the point where there's a health insurance discrepancy and yep, we shouldn't be giving them a hundred percent paid. Then there's going to be a pay cut. So, so really, you know, it's, it's a scale, right? It's ups and downs and the hope is, is that everything is kind of more of an even wash where we're going to give some more pay and the benefits are going to cost a little bit more, so it balances out. Uh, but we have to do that all at once. And I think that's what Dana's getting at is, is you know, if we keep delaying the healthcare stuff, you know, there's a potential that, that's going to cause so, some hiccups and, and it's, we need to be prudent to our staff to keep them in the loop on that because, you know, if you give somebody a huge raise and then six months from now, you ask them to start paying, you know, fifty dollars a month for health insurance, they've already set their budget and that's, that's just not fair.
Well, I ask then, is that conversation taking place with staff? You just referred to? Well, that's an issue then, if we want to have staff involved and we haven't talked to them.
Absolutely, it's an issue. I don't think we've even talked to the staff. I mean, we've just set a meeting and we did the personnel, so why aren't we sending out a survey to them like what we talked about earlier? I mean, why don't we have the staff involved? Why aren't we having meetings with the staff?
Historically, when insurance discussions took place, we had a committee. And on that committee was Roger Brooks and Blaine Jones, as well as a representative from each, each department in the city. And everybody sat down and talked about insurance changes or proposed changes. Uh, when we went out for bids two years ago, between Avera, Sanford and, and Wellmark, that was fully discussed with that committee before it was presented to the city council. The city has always taken an approach that wages and benefits are linked. If you raise one and take away from the other, it's a net, could be a net loss. If you want to change that and do wages separate from benefits, that's a huge change. If you want to take a look at insurance plans or packages, historically, the council has been very, um, cognizant of the grandfathered status on our insurance plan. And that has been a focal point for a number of years. If you wish to change that, we certainly can. But the mayor is correct. If we want to do this, we should put together a bid package that contains all of the information that those companies are looking for. And those companies use different information and different formulas to determine whether we're a large group or a small group. They don't use the same information. So we would need to sit down and it's much more detailed than just giving a, our last quote to an insurance agent. So if we're going to bid this out, we certainly can. And it would, it would certainly give us something to take a look at, take back to that committee. We have a July first renewal of our existing insurance policy. We won't be able to get the numbers for that until ninety days ahead of time, which is sometime in April. We could certainly shoot for a bid package to go out in March, send it to any number of agents in the area and see what they can offer. And in the meantime, we can develop that information that those insurance companies are going to need, including dates of birth of dependents and spouses, et cetera, et cetera. How many part timers we have working on a monthly basis? How many hours do they work each month? How many hours do they work a week? How many weeks a year do they work? So we need to go through payroll for the past couple of years.
Excuse me, Brian. The committee has to have some input on there. I can lower your insurance costs, just give you a ten thousand dollar deductible.
Correct.
Uh, that, I don't think that's the direction we want to go. We need to have some. We need to have some parameters.
And that has been, the focus of that committee was, when we looked at Avera and Sanford and Wellmark, we put a spreadsheet together comparing those benefits. Office co-pay, is there an office co-payer, isn't there? Is it 25 bucks, is it 20 bucks? Does it go to the deductible or does it not? What's the max out-of-pocket expenditure on those plans? There's plenty of plans out there that can be cheapened up. But all you're doing is pushing that premium cost onto the employee. And they're fairly significant. And I don't think the city got well, I won't say. But we will, we will certainly take a look at a wage scale. We're working on that now. And then I would propose that sometime probably in February, March, we send out a bid package to agents looking for various providers.
I think that'd be great.
I think in addition to that, we need to look at the entire benefits package. We still aren't talking about disability, long-term, short-term, group life. We're not looking at any of that. And frankly, I think that we do have to come to the realization that with a policy that is so antiquated and so far out of the norm, out of what we're finding with other municipalities, with other industries, private sector, public sector, it doesn't matter. Some of our components are unheard of, and it's not going to be popular with staff, but we need to do that. And on the flip side, I just want to reiterate, we're making a wage scale that is absolutely going to be to their benefit. They're going to get paid raises quicker, larger, plus a COLA. This isn't just a bad-for-employee, bad-for-employee, bad-for-employee. I mean, there is, there are gives and takes here. We also have wages that are going to go up fairly significantly if we get them slotted correctly. So there is a lot to it. I just, I just don't think, we just seem to be taking super baby steps on super tiny parts within it. And that's what frustrates me.
But you need to take baby steps. You're looking at, the 100% payment for premiums goes back to the late 80s, early 90s. So it's been in place for 30 years. The deductible buy-down was from 2002, was the first time I saw it mentioned in the council minutes. So these are longstanding policies. If you want to radically change them, you need to do it incrementally. You can't just come in and wipe the slate clean and say, "This is what we're doing." You have an awesome work staff. They are a great group of people. They earn every benefit and wage that they get. I'm not out plowing snow at 3 o'clock in the morning. I'm not out chasing bad guys through the dark, wanting to know if I'm going to get shot or not. I'm not the one out digging up sewer mains at 3 o'clock in the morning either on a freezing cold winter night. This is an awesome group of employees.
Boils down, does the council want to be average? I've heard the conversation, average a lot, that the average person pays 69% or 70%. I don't know if we want to be average. I don't want to be average. I want to be above average.
I want to be above average, but I also want it, I want some buy-in, maybe 5%, 10%. I want some buy-in, just because from the public standpoint, they don't get those kind of benefits. And so we've got to, we've got to balance it, folks, a little, a little bit give and take to try to make it seem fair, I think.
It's a tough environment when you're talking government and private sector.
That's right.
It's a very tough environment. I've been doing this for 30 years. I've never gotten a bonus for my work ethic at the school district. If you're talking private sector, Barb, there's a lot of bonus programs that are going out there. So it's apples to oranges when you get into these things. Yeah, it's tough.
Y'all know how I feel. I'm just going to keep it at that. I'm all for you guys.
So at the next council meeting, we'll have an action item on the agenda, directing staff to develop a bid package for insurance reviews.
So Joe, just because we're questioning it, doesn't mean that I am against our employees. I think they do a great job, so, but we have to question these things. We can't just, you know, take it on and on and on. So please do not think that I don't think you do a great job. I do. I wouldn't want to be out there plowing snow, so, or whatever you do. So I appreciate all of our employees.
We also have to be cognizant, though, because we have low turnover. We don't want to start, just like Paul said, we don't want to start with, are we going to be average? Are we going to be above average? We're above average right now because of the awesome staff that we have. So I'm just going to leave it at that.
Last comment for me on this. You know, we, as I said earlier, we have a difficult task in front of us, because we also have to be prudent with taxpayer dollars. There's more people questioning us than just staff. And I think I also mentioned that I don't believe anybody from the committee or the council wants anything drastic. We just want some steps to get us a little bit more current. The last item that was here for me was the 15-year-plus employee. And I'll be known as the handout queen. So I'd ask for this to be on the agenda, because the way that the minutes had read from what was forwarded to me from the February 2013 meeting was indicating that the city is planning to pay 100% of single or family health insurance for any employee who switches over to part-time. No definition of how many hours that needs to be, as long as they've been here for 15 years. And then it would continue on after that, and we'd pay for their Medicare. So this was concerning to me, because this could put us in a predicament where we hire a 20-year-old, and at age 35, they decide to go to the private sector and get a better-paying job, and they just keep a few hours on with the city. And we're going to pay their health insurance for the rest of their life.
So this one is one that I just don't think makes sense. I mean, it really doesn't. And, you know, when we could have any one of our staff step down to whatever level it is, as part-time, and still get 100% of their pay or of their benefits paid. And when you look at a standard employee that's on full coverage, Dana, you have it closer than I do. Maybe not. Just as an example, so everyone understands, the cost to the city for an employee, spouse, and child is $19,273. And you could work 10 hours a week, and you could get 20 grand a year worth of insurance. That doesn't add up to me. That's not prudent spending of the taxpayers' dollars. It just doesn't make sense. Of course, we're going to get people here. The waiting list is probably pretty long to get into, Brandon, because who wouldn't want to be an employee here? You know, I'm kind of wondering when the council's going to get this package, to be honest, because it's so, so good. It's better than packages that I have access to as a federal employee. So it just, it boggles my mind that we're in this predicament. And the reason that we're in this predicament is, is instead of something in the past happening where we gave people the hourly rate that they should have, we said, "Oh, it's easier just to take it out of this part of the budget and do it as benefits." And really, all we're looking to do is get that ship righted back and say, "Your total compensation is goofy number, $50,000 a year, add some insurance, whatever." But we're trying to take and shift that percentage of your pay back to where it belongs. So you get the hourly rate is whatever it is, and the insurance is that percent. And, you know, make it back to where the standards would be. And this part here, where a part-time person can be part-time, if they've worked for us in the past, they can get their 100% family coverage, it's just, it's unreal to me.
That's not the current practice. If you are a part-time employee, you pay a percentage based upon your hours worked. We do not pay any, we have never paid full benefits for a part-time employee. We will take a look at that. We will modify it to the current practice that we do. We will check where that language came from, but that is not the practice.
But didn't we discuss that the other, or maybe it was at our meeting, that you were going to look at this anyway?
Correct.
Yeah, so I'm not sure why we're bringing it up now, because at our meeting, he said he was going to look at it and look into the language, so we could get that adjusted.
Because I found it very concerning and something that the council should, it was already on the agenda before our meeting. I asked him to put this on the agenda like two weeks ago. But I also think it's prudent that the council is aware of this, because I think it needs to be changed. This information came directly from Brian. This isn't something I went and found.
But it is being changed. He's looking into it, and he's going to change it.
That's what the minutes state. The minutes are incorrect. That is not the practice that we do for part-time employees and health insurance. We never have, and we have not in the past. We aren't doing it now. I will check and see what happened with the language in the minutes, but that is not correct. That is what's in the minutes, but that is not the practice of the city. Never has been. I don't know how much more clear I can make it.
So when you gave this information to Dana, did you explain that to her?
She asked for a copy of the language. I gave it to her.
That's not the question I asked, Brian.
I'm going to answer you. We talked about it at the Personnel Meeting the other night, and he said he was going to go, he said that's not the correct practice. He's going to go back and check into it, and we're going to get it corrected.
Practice wasn't, he just said he'd look into it. He didn't say that's what, wasn't what we used.
No, I said that was not the current practice. We don't use that.
And then the other thing, I guess I want to point out, is in our employee manual, which is almost two years, it came out almost two years after these minutes, it actually says something very different. It says that the employee pays 100%. So there's inconsistencies with what we're practicing, what the minutes say, and what the employee handbook says.
The employee handbook was modified in '14 after the 2013 meeting.
That's what I'm reading.
A lot of things was taken out of the employee handbook.
It says they pay 100% in the handbook. Is that what we practice?
I believe so.
I wouldn't know. That's why I'm asking.
Well, then you need to stop in, and we'll go through it.
I'm just reading what the handbook says.
I understand that. But we also discussed it with Personnel Committee, just like Joe said.
I do believe before things like this get brought up at council, they do need to be discussed with staff before they're brought up. You know, especially when there's a discrepancy like this. There's absolutely no reason to bring this up at council until we get it clarified. And as that Personnel Committee, he said that it's not right. So I would personally ask that you clarify with council or the staff first before you bring it up to council.
So I just want to be clear. Are we putting together a benefits information that we give to insurance people? Because I understood that that was happening like August, September, October, one of those months. Because I, I'm kind of disappointed that we missed the opportunity to look at quotes here. I know Dana's been working really hard on it. So is that in process? Will it be done? When's the timeline?
It will be an action item on the next council agenda, to direct staff to do just that. What was done in October was a request from council. It was never voted on, a suggestion that we give our current renewal policy to a different carrier. We did that. No. You asked if we could give them the renewal policy. That was done in October. Now, there's all kinds of other questions, like I said, as to who's a part-timer, who's a full-timer. Are we large group, are we small group? There's all kinds of information that those places request. What was requested to do in October was to provide the renewal policy of our existing plan. That was done.
Now, we asked to get another quote, and on October 12th, after the briefing meeting, I sent you the email from that lady requesting a census. And that census was a simple download from our current carrier that would have given her information, including the dependence and dates of birth, to do a quote. She got that after waiting six weeks, and after hounding and me nagging, it took six weeks to get that, and now our window is closed.
Where we're at, Brian's going to prepare a revised pay scale to be done by the second meeting in December. Brian's going to bring an action item on the next council agenda to seek quotes on our current health insurance policy with several options. I assume we're going to have several options. I don't know. Do you want a $2,000 deductible? Do you want a $1,000 deductible? The administration will have to determine that. And you're going to review this stuff on the 15-year blah, blah, blah that isn't even really practice. Is that accurate? Counsel?
Yes.
Moving on. Item number E, city-school collaboration session. The school district would like to invite the City Council to their, prior to their board meeting next, is it December 10th, Brian? Prior to our regular scheduled board meeting, we'll just have a sit-down, discuss collaborative things that we both deal with together. I have had a council member submit to me an agenda item. I would appreciate it if anybody else has something that they'd like to talk about, to send me an email, so we can get it on some form of agenda, agenda and move forward. If you have any specific item, otherwise we'll just come up with some agenda.
So I just want to be clear that I think it's very prudent that we do a public notice on this meeting, since there's the potential and intent that there will be city business discussed.
Okay, item F, the new first reading of ordinance 571, the role of council slash mayor in the code of conduct. We went over this at a work session.
I would just say that pages 56 to 66 are red-line changes from what I made following our November 12, 2018 work session. So that's the first 10 pages. The second 10 pages about the 67 to 76, are those ordinances reflective of the changes directed by the council through the work sessions? So in terms of when you're trying to work through the redlining, 67 to 76 is what we would, we're doing our first reading on. The first 10 pages is just my changes from the work session.
Questions? Reflect what we talked about at the last meeting?
Sure looks like it.
The red line's become very cumbersome, I know.
Do we need a motion to approve it?
I'll make a motion that we approve the first reading of this ordinance, 571.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Item number H, notice of Christmas tree sales from the county, Brian?
We received notice that there will be a Christmas tree, a temporary use permit for the property described for Christmas tree sales. No action is necessary unless the council is opposed to it.
I'm certainly not opposed. Is that the same with I?
Correct.
Any opposition from the council? Nope. Item J. Christmas party when, Brian? Or Christiane?
A annual Christmas party Friday, December 7th for staff and council.
How about I, item I?
Missed one?
He crossed out at the beginning.
Beginning.
G?
Thank you.
Okay.
I as a raffle, if the council's opposed to the raffle for the Brandon Hardwood challenge. You need to make a motion.
Anything else that?
A motion to authorize the Christmas party.
I've screwed up.
Second.
Motion and second. Is there any discussion on the Christmas party? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
One other, just a reminder, December 20th, we have a joint meeting with the Sioux Falls City Council. Don't know where or what time yet. When I get that information, I'll get it out to you.
May I move to the Street Committee report? Maintenance work report? Questions, comments? Safety and Holly crosswalks?
I have two YouTube videos that I want to show you. But I want you to know that I'm not recommending at this time that we do either one of these yet. But it's more of just informational purposes, since we've been talking about what we can do. since we've been talking about what we can do at those crosswalks. We have a couple of crosswalks that have the slow yellow flashing light. And so the first video is on rectangular rapid flashing beacons. They refer to them as RRFBs. This is probably the cheaper route to go about, replacing those slower flashing lights. And then I also have a video on the hog system. This is going to be a little bit more expensive option, and I want to make sure that we have the traffic counts to warrant one of these. The city of Sioux Falls does have one. They do not have it in a school zone, which is where we would be proposing it. They also have it at a signalized intersection. Drove by it today. They said that it's not used very often, just because it's not, there's not a whole lot of pedestrians through there right now because of construction. So it does, it does work. It's fully functional there. It's just not being used. It is on 10th Street and 2nd Avenue. So if you're heading west, it's right over the viaduct. And it's pretty much just for, if you turn right, it's for that crosswalk. So there's only one there. So it's really not a good example of what we would use it for. So the YouTube video just shows a good example of what we would use it for.
Your sound is off down there in the bottom. Bottom right, click that.
Okay, well, this is the RRF, rectangular rapid flashing beacon. This is the one that Federal Highway just approved last March. So you can see during the day, you know, it's not going to be a whole lot more noticeable than the flashing light, but that's what we have now. But at night, for some of those after-school activities, it really shows. Those run about 10, 15,000 for crosswalk. And if you look at all the power between zoo and foot rock, we have nine crosswalks. I don't think we would want to put one of these at every crosswalk. We can sell it as a surprise. But this one would probably be a good candidate for that fourth street crosswalk. This other one is a hog system. And this one will be quite a bit more expensive, because we have to put in the poles. There'll be different signals. And this is really just going to show you how it works. So there is no green light. It's okay?
Yeah.
So it's the flashing yellow, the solid red, and then it goes flashing red. So that if the crosswalk is empty, then its car can go by.
What's the cost difference?
Oh, quite a bit. Depends if we need to actually put them overhanging, or if we can just put them on a pole. Most of the time, they put them overhead, so that more cars can see it. But I think we could probably get away with putting it on a pole. That's what the city of Sioux Falls. So if we just need that with the standard pole, I would say it's 30,000 to 40,000, give or take. If we actually have to put up a pole and have it over the street, it's going to be quite a bit more, probably twice as much.
So what would the cost be for something like we have with ice?
That signal? 100,000? Which would be nice to replace with one of these hog systems. That's on the state highways. But I don't want to recommend anything tonight. I do want to do my due diligence and have traffic counts, and talk to the school, and talk to the police department, make sure Public Works is okay with it, and then I'll bring a recommendation to the council.
Thanks, Tammy.
Any other questions? We need to surplus some iPads.
Yeah, we got four iPads when we asked for two from the US Court System. And we're not going to be using all them. They're 11 years old, or, excuse me, they're seven years old already, going on eight. So I feel we can get rid of one or two of them. I just figured we'd get rid of the two now, so. And I don't know what the procedure is, but I think, Brian, you said you got to put it out for bid or something, so.
Yeah. Place a value of less than 500, but I would suggest that we publicly bid these in an advertisement.
Okay, and we need a motion to approve, declare this surplus?
Yeah, declare surplus property.
I'll make that motion. For two iPads under 500.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Water and Sewer Committee, SDC charges.
One, one quick thing on the street. I had a handout for you there. There is a public input meeting on the Maple Park Street corridor study, scheduled for Tuesday, between 6:00 and 7:00 at the intermediate school.
Are we going to push that out on our Facebook page?
Yes, we will.
SDC's charges?
SDC charges on page 85. This is the breakdown that we did, starting in 2017. If you remember, SDC charges are charged to us from the city of Sioux Falls, starting with a 3/4-inch meter smaller at 2391, and escalating from there based upon size. So this year, that cost breakdown is $719. Goes to a developer when a lot is plotted. $719 is paid by the contractor when they pull the water meter. And then the city pays $953 of that. Under this plan that was put together a couple of years ago, we are slowly fading out the city's portion of that SDC charge, so that eventually in 2022, 100% of that cost will be on the developer and the contractor pulling the permit. So in 2019, we typically look at these in January, or in December. So I would like to draft a resolution setting those fees for 2019. If you're comfortable, I would do it with what's showing on the spreadsheet there. Or if you want some changes, I can incorporate those as well.
Have you had the time to put together the quantity of each of these in the previous years, like we discussed?
Not yet.
So I am a proponent of keeping this as it shows for 2019. And the reasoning is, we've had a lot of meetings on this subject with the developers and the builders, and there's a fine balancing act between what they can afford based on their budgets, that they didn't know this was coming about, and what we can do to help government, or help with growth. And I know that there's some angst about some of this, but I am a proponent of keeping it the way it is.
Keeping it like he has it on the spreadsheet?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, is this not the charge at that development committee that they had asked us to just take a look at? Remember, Brian, when I put that in a minute?
Yep, to take a look at development costs.
Yeah. I'm not saying I'm against the bar, but this is the one item that they'd asked us to look at that night, but I think.
Right, I think you're right.
They want us to be morbid.
Well, I think they just wanted us to look at it in the overall perspective of the perception, where we were on other charges, things like that.
I think you're correct.
So I guess until we understand the true cost and impact to the budget here, I guess I'm kind of hesitant to say yes or no, one way or another. You know, this is a true impact to the city budget. It's coming out of taxpayers' dollars, and, you know, it's supplementing some of the development, which is fine in some cases. But I'd like to understand what the true cost of this is yearly, and what specific budget does it come out of? Does it come out of the sewer and the water? Does it come out of the general fund? Where does this come from?
Comes out of wastewater.
I like the way things have been set up. I also like the idea that the Development Committee take a look at it and provide some feedback as well. Well, I'm not sure what feedback you're going to get from that Development Committee, because they just wanted the city to look at it again, as if you were going to keep the charges the same as what they had.
I agree with how it's laid out, because we've had many discussions about this for a long time. So I'm going to agree with how Brian has it laid out.
And if it's laid out like this, if we ever wanted to change it, we could do that when?
It's, this is just the plan that we've got forth. We look at it every year in December by resolution to set those fees.
You really can look at it anytime, and we tend to change it January 1st, so we start the building cycle the same throughout the entire year.
We're not looking for any approval tonight.
No, no, no. Just some input before I draft the resolution.
Appears like it's year three of a six-year program that was put together back in 2017.
Yep.
To taper the
Two months.
City off the
Correct.
Charge. Okay, any other questions on that? Sump pump policy?
I give you a list of the people that I have on our list right now of sump pumps that are pumping. Some of these have actually quit pumping as of the last few days here, they've told me. I've gotten response back from a few of them to let us know that they are going to send the permit in, which I told them is a draft, and at the time, the city is not charging the fee. But I did let them know that if they don't let us know, and then somebody comes in, changes the water meter, they find that they're pumping their sump pump into the sanitary sewer, that is against ordinance 14-5-11, which a surcharge of $500 a month can be put on the bill of the property owner, so. But this sump pump connection permit that Lisa kind of helped draft up, I would like to see this become a permit that we send to people in the future. But before we can do that, the ordinance has to be rewritten a little bit, which I think falls into the next category on the thing here. But like I say, I have gotten pretty good feedback from it. I've actually had a couple of the people that own some fourplexes that would be even willing to help pay to have a sump line put in, so it does not have to run across sidewalks, driveways, and then the street, so. And there's at least two of them that I know would like to even chip in and help the city pay for that line, so. I think it's going over pretty well. I did have one person that's a little adamant about his water doesn't go on the street, but. So I guess this was just kind of a draft, so you guys could take a look. After the ordinance gets changed, then it'd be something that we could implement. And the fee, I guess, we can leave that up to you guys. I think what's there now is a pretty good fee for it, for out of the six months that it's going to be used, so. The city of Sioux Falls doesn't allow them to do that, I don't believe, at all. But they also won't let you put it onto the sidewalks or the streets. So if your backyard becomes a skating rink, it's a skating rink. And you have to make sure that that stays there. I'm not very clear on it. I looked at theirs a little bit when we started this, but I haven't looked at it and seen if it's changed any of that, so. The $500 fee is, I believe. I think that $500 fee, if they're pumping illegally, yep, that surcharge can be put on there. I'm pretty sure that's on there. Yeah, but I don't think they have a permit fee, because they don't allow people to do it at all. So the way their ordinance reads, too.
So sump pumps pump a lot of water. It's a big hose, and you're putting a lot of water into the sewer. That does come at a cost to the city. I want to try to understand how we can recoup some of that cost. I'm not looking to make money or anything like that. But it's going to impact us a couple of ways. It's going to dilute our solids, which may impact Sioux Falls treatment. And it's also going to add to our volume. So if everybody in town would turn their sump pumps on, that had sump pumps running, and put them into the sewer, that's going to cause some increase in our usage rates. So I don't know how you define that, but I think we need to really look into that, folks, because it's just more expense that we're not collecting an income from.
The line that you alluded to with the fourplex, what does that entail? And so we're cost sharing with that?
Oh, it's just talk right now. I talked to two people, and they said that they would be interested in cost sharing to put a line, a sump line into the storm sewer that exists on Chestnut. There's a couple of buildings to the east that could use a sump line there, which that part of the development didn't have sump lines put in when they built it. You go a little further south in the development and east, they all have a sump line, which a couple of the people that are on my list could actually tie into that. But it means they have to tear up their yard now, because they've just strung it over the, actually, they got it across the yard next door and into the street, so. But we did have an issue at Chestnut and Rochelle. I sent pictures of that, too, where we actually removed a whole dump truck load of ice, which was coming from the majority of one house. And that was around November 11th, or November 8th, excuse me. So it was just one sump pump that was creating most of that. And it happens to be a bus stop, and we had some traffic issues where people slid through the intersection and stuff, too, so.
And that's our goal here, is just the winter sump pump?
Well, it's not good on our streets either. Yeah, that's the whole thing. It's November 1st through April 1st, or, excuse me, November 15th through April 1st is what the permit's going to allow. And it's just to help keep some of that stuff off the street. It's costing us extra money when I have to pay my guys to go out and scrape it off the road and haul it away. And, oh, we got to put more salt down. And everybody says, well, just put more salt on it. Well, the salt's not going to do it, because eventually you get that freeze thaw again, and it's just going to freeze, and it's going to get worse. We've got several intersections in town where it's just drainage. It's not even sump pumps where we have to clean, because the ice will build up six inches deep, and it just creates a rut, so. I'm just trying to help reduce the liability of anybody getting injured at an intersection or something, so.
So what do you need from us, Raleigh?
I just want you guys to kind of see what it involves. This is just kind of a draft letter. I've sent this out. I think we sent it to 12 houses last week. And like I say, I've had pretty good response from most of the people, and they're pretty agreeable with it. Some of them questioned the fee a little bit. So this is just kind of information for you guys for right now. When I can get with Lisa to work on the ordinance stuff, then I would like to see it done. But it's something that I'd like to see done soon, preferably by the first of the year, too, so. This is kind of a way for me to track right now how often, or how many are actually dumping into the sanitary right now. Because I've had two of them tell me that their hoses blew up and started to flood their basements already, so. That's all I had for it. Just pretty much information only. That's all I had for it. Just pretty much information only.
What I gather on that whole situation, Raleigh, it's a benefit for us as a city to allow them to put it into the sanitary. So, so we don't have the mess that we're trying to deal with.
Yeah, it's better in the sense of the liability side of it. It's better in the sense that it's not going to put the extra wear and tear on our streets. And it's saving the city money shortly, you know, in the short run, that I'm not having to, uh, hire my, or get my employees out there, hire it done, so.
Correct. I'm with you.
The con, the bad side is, yes, we're putting it to the sanitary. Hence the, they requested maybe $50 fee for the, the six months, so.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Sewer ordinance revisions.
It just kind of goes back to the sump pump permit. That's where we're going to have to look at the sewer ordinances and make a change in there. And I know Lisa had some changes on our agreement with the city of Sioux Falls that, I don't know if you got anything back on that yet.
Sent them off to Diane Best over at the city of Sioux Falls, have not heard from her yet. So that was, gosh, three or four weeks ago. I know she's extremely swamped. They're the ones who want the changes to our pre-treatment, so it's kind of taken a year and a half. I, I've sent them to her, I wait for her, she gets them back to me, I send them to her, I wait for her, so.
Okay. Raleigh? I thought I told you not to move. Don't move.
Grease trap inspection, uh, right now, there's no further information on that. I'm just looking at trying to start another, or have another meeting to invite the people that we had invited the last time, hopefully get a little more attendance. Kind of give them an idea of what we're trying to lean towards here. What kind of a program or inspection program we would make or something, so. But right now, there won't be anything else until probably January, but.
Okay.
Try and set up another meeting then.
Thank you.
Thanks, Raleigh. Thanks, Raleigh, doing that.
Next item on the agenda is item 12E, recommendation from the Water Committee. It's on pages 87 through 90.
Lot of information. Uh, we had a great, uh, Water Committee meeting, um, Water Development Committee. And, uh, we had the opportunity to use some of the knowledge that we have learned over the course of the last year, uh, on gamma logs. So it was interesting, uh, to go through that process. We were given, uh, a letter from Stockwell Engineering with some recommendations, uh, basically some options. Option 1, 2, and 3, um, that would be on your council packet on page, uh, 93, the way it looks. But at this time, uh, the consensus of the Water Development Committee, um, was to move forward, uh, with the development of well number 8 to include, uh, the full screen all the way from 2, from 200 feet below grade down to 280 feet below grade. A few things that, uh, we discussed, um, and this is in the memo that, uh, Brian put together, and I put my name on the end of it. Basically, the, the intent with well 8 is to be redundant for well number 6. So the yield from 8 i- is the, the overriding factor here, uh, trying to get as much, uh, volume as we can out of it. It was estimated that if we shortened the, the screen, uh, there would be some impacts to that, uh, quantity that we could produce, which would mean that we may not have the ability to be redundant for well 6. So that's what led the, the committee to go all the way to 280 feet. The one thing that, uh, we wanted to, uh, point out was, should we need to, there is the opportunity to shorten that up in the future. If we ever found any need to, whether it was quality or anything like that. So we can shorten up that screen. And this recommendation is part of the original well package, that, uh, there's no additional cost at this time. And, uh, this will take us through the next gate review, which would be after we get the 32-hour pump testing. So Tammy can kind of talk about the bid letting process, right? That's coming up if we say yes, right? Go for it. Okay.
We'll wait.
We'll wait. So, uh, at this point, the, the short and skinny of it is move forward, uh, with drilling it from, the screening it from 200 to 280 feet. And then, uh, complete the 32-hour pump testing, get that information to the committee, we'll go from there.
Any questions?
I just want to state that, uh, we were having problems with the audio and the video, um, that night, as well as kind of that week. That has since been fixed. They were out here today and fixed that. I do have the audio from that night, so I'm working on making that into, you have to make it into a video, and I'll get that uploaded, so I plan on doing that tomorrow.
And I just want to personally say thank you. We're finally, what, this would have been a year and a half ago, moving forward with this. So I'm glad we're finally moving forward with well 8.
Progress. Anything else? Item F and G look like, uh, approval to authorize advertising for bids on, uh, Redwood Storm Sewer. And, uh, bids for well 8.
Yep, the Redwood Storm Sewer was actually bid last year and rejected because it was too high of a bid. So we're going to try it again. Um, we would advertise on the 21st and the 28th, and the bids would be open December 11th. We're expecting those to come in around the 200,000 range.
Did it come in last year? I thought it was like 3/4?
I thought it was 230.
Yeah, I think it's 230.
Ask for a motion to allow her to advertise for those bids.
So moved.
Motion is second. Any further discussion on the advertising for bids on this Redwood Storm Sewer project? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item G is authorization for bids on well 8.
Yep, we would advertise on November 28th and December 5th and open bids December 19th.
Motion is second to advertise for bids on the project for well number 8. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Are we done, or we got executive session? Make a motion to adjourn.
Sewer second. Motion is second to adjourn at 7:40. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.